That her internal organs started to erode and eat themselves. That's what happens when people have to worry about how they're going to pay their bills while also going to work. On top of making sure that their kids get fed, on top of making sure that whatever random function that the schools want you to go to, you go to, right? And that's what actually happens. These are real life consequences of the policies that you're passing today. Or you're talking about today. This resulted in our family going into a major financial crisis and our home going into foreclosure. Adding more stress. And so I just want to clarify that casual workers don't just decide to be casual workers because it's convenient. Casual workers are oftentimes casual workers because they get paid so little anyways that they can't afford to pay for childcare. Casual workers oftentimes need that flexible schedule so that they can work 12 a.m. till 6 a.m. While their kids are sleeping. That's what a casual worker does. It's not because of a snazzy schedule. And I just wanted to really clarify that for the city council. Because my mom was a childcare, I mean a casual worker. And I just want to end by saying that I hope that you are listening to the people who are struggling. There are a lot of different opinions who came to this mic today. And I hope that you listen to the folks who are struggling even more than me. Right? Because, and I also want you to look at who they are. Right? They're black and brown folks primarily. This is a race issue. You've seen it racially represented right in front of you today. Right? And to be real, they don't look like most of y'all. Shout out to the council members of color. Make sure you make the right decision too.
And if you could wrap up your comments?
But you know, they are black and their lives matter, their health matters, their dignity matters. They are brown and they're providing for their families here and overseas. There are refugees who are just seeking dignity. Those are the folks that I just want you to look at instead of the facts and the numbers.
Okay.
What's that? Absolutely. Thank you.
You will have your opportunity. And if you could wrap up, please?
Absolutely. So I just hope that you, you're looking at the, what really matters. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there a speaker forty-two? Okay. And then I'm going to ask you two to say your name and then if you could please make sure that you are fully signed up with the clerk because we had somebody else listed.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Nikki Mabry. I live in the Powderhorn neighborhood in Ward nine. Council members, I come to you as someone from rural Wisconsin that sought opportunity in Minneapolis. I moved to Minneapolis ten years ago and made my home because I believe that Minneapolis is a great city of opportunity. I come from rural Wisconsin and a mother who is the most brilliant, hardworking, creative person I know. Growing up, my mother worked two jobs. She was a casual worker and also cared for vulnerable adults. She was a full-time nursing student at night with honors. She cared for my terminally ill grandmother who passed away of cancer. By the time I was seven years old, I knew how to give a nebulizer treatment and check my sister's oxygen levels. Because while I was born healthy and fairly carefree, my younger sister Sadafi struggled with chronic asthma every day of her life. Many, many nights, my little family huddled together in the emergency room and watched my sister struggle for her life. And many, many mornings after that struggle, we got up. My mother, my sister and I. And my mother went to work caring for other vulnerable adults and my grandmother. I went to school, having done my homework in many, many waiting rooms. This isn't the kind of life that we want for people in Minneapolis. This isn't the kind of life that the people that elected you sent you to give them. Right? So I know every day you make decisions with a great deal of compassion. You make decisions grounded in a great deal of truth and you deal with a lot of complexities. What's real is that we've had this debate for a year and a half and Minneapolis can't wait. I'm asking you to do the right thing and pass Earn Sick and Save Time today. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-three, Dan Prentis. Speaker forty-four is Chase Elliott. Speaker forty-five is Hassan Hassan. Speaker forty-six is Frank Brown.
I'm Dan Prentis. I work in the food service industry and I've also spent ten years working as a caregiver. In those fields, people work long hours under strenuous circumstances a lot. And people come to work sick for various reasons. And I don't think this ordinance will completely eliminate that, but it sure as hell will help. And so as a matter of public health, I'm supporting this ordinance. And also as a matter of social justice and equity. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker forty-four, Chase Elliott. Speaker forty-five, forty-six and forty-seven could also probably get in line.
Hey, I just want to tell everybody here, thanks for listening. My name is Chase Elliott. I'm a Northside resident. I'm from Philadelphia. I just want to give a story about, I've been working at Target Center, the Timberwolves Arena for about five years. One day I got injured going home from work for a mistaken identity from the Minneapolis Police Department. I'm left-handed. They broke my left hand, thinking I was somebody else. Then when they found out I wasn't, they let me go and told me to go home. Now I had to go through surgery. I went to surgery alone, woke up alone without my family being there because they didn't have Earn Sick and Sick Time to be in the hospital with me. Now after that, I went straight to work. I have kids I take care of. I could be in the streets, but I choose to take care of my family and have a job and do what I'm supposed to do in life. So I went straight to work. I had multiple supervisors that supervised me. Some of them told me I couldn't take off because my doctor even said I should be at home resting. But because of my family, I stayed at work and worked my butt off. And then when my pain started getting unbearable, one of my supervisors seen it and they were like, you know what, go home and relax for three days. And come back to work and if anything, we'll talk about some more stuff. I took them three days off. When I came back to work, other supervisors that didn't want me to go home was mad and ended up firing me after five years. Never had an issue at the job, not to mention I was, I was in the union. Never spoke to nobody. Nobody ever talked to me about nothing. They all let me get fired. Now Earn Sick and Sick Time is well deserved because it's a health issue. Not only do people get sick, people get injured unexpectedly. There's police officers killing people right now and their family can't even take off to go to funerals. They don't have the money to support the funeral. And we are here asking you guys, who most of y'all don't go through what we go through, to understand that. Because if you work in the United States, you deserve Earn Sick Time. So if you, if you're telling us that, not just us as people, but everybody, if you're saying that we don't deserve Earn Sick and Sick Time, then I don't know what to say. But employees, employers help businesses. And if businesses feel like workers don't deserve that, then they don't, then they're not supposed to be business owners. Because now without the employers, there wouldn't be a business. I'm gonna make it fast, but I am a parent. I do have responsibilities and I work hard to take care of my responsibilities. And now, because I'm a part of this, not Neighborhood Organized for Change, I talk to fellow friends that I grew up with, telling them to hang in there and still try to find jobs. A lot of them feel like they're not going to get jobs because of how they look. A lot of them feel like they're not going to get jobs because they're black. A lot of them feel like they're not going to get jobs because they live in north Minneapolis. So as a Northside organizer, I strongly talk to them and tell them to hang in there. I don't know if you guys go through what anybody else go through, but I know you have sick family members.
And if you could wrap up there.
Yeah, you have sick kids and also you've witnessed other people get injured. And I'm just asking that you guys understand that and go ahead with it. And I also appreciate the small business owners that's trying to go ahead with this too. Thanks.
Thank you. Speaker forty-five, Hassan Hassan. Speaker forty-six is Frank Brown. Speaker forty-seven is Arcoil Bordeo. Speaker forty-eight, Eli Adelson.
Hello, good evening, good afternoon, council members. I am here today to testify and favor this ordinance. My name is Hassan and my last name is Hassan also. So I live at sixteen oh one Fourth Street South. That's in Ward six. Council member of Ward seven is representative. I come here today to speak about work sick, pay sick and time. I currently work at AutoZone where I had to drop my hours to one day, five hours. Reason is because I couldn't be able to get enough time. And they put me at twelve, twelve point at this timing right now, which is basically if I miss one more day, I'm gonna lose my job. So, and the reason that happened is because days that I get sick with cold and anything and I don't want to go to work or actually go to the doctor, I won't be able to get that passed or I don't get that, saying, okay, well, you're not going to get a point for this. Not only that, I'm not getting paid for it, I'm also getting a point where I'm very close to getting fired. And I'm thinking to myself here, my value as an employee is not, is not worth it right now. It's not where it's supposed to be. Because I'm, I'm working over fifteen, fifteen hundred hours for the past three to four months and I can't get anything. I can't get no sick time or nothing. On top of that, I'm actually getting a point. And I have a doctor notes, I have, I have everything. And all I just wanted to say is that I'm here as a person and I wanted to see if you guys are interested to support this. And I respectfully ask you guys to do so. So, thank you.
Thank you. Frank Brown, number forty-six. Then after that, forty-seven is Arcoil Bordeo. Forty-eight, Eli Adelson Stein. Speaker forty-nine is Gabriella Farns. And I apologize for anyone that I mispronounced her name.
My name is Frank Brown. I'm a leader with Take Action Minnesota, Main Street Alliance, Isaiah, Jewish Community Action and NOK. I'm also a member of the Broadway Business Association, also a member of Uptown Association. And I'm a business owner. I own Minuteman Press in Uptown. So you know, I find this, I find this issue, you know, somewhat conflicting. Because as a business owner, you know, I want to maximize my wealth. But as a progressive leader in our community, I want to make sure that I'm leading on the right things. So I run my business very ethically. And I've heard these stories and everybody that this ordinance affects and can help has spoken, has spoken for this ordinance. It's earned sick and save time. So these people are actually earning this sick and save time. It's not given to them. They're earning it. I listened to some of the other business people. They talk about tracking, you know, record, you know, tracking records and all that. Well, you know what? I'm glad we got computers. It makes it so much easier to track these records. It's not a heavy burden. I'm thinking about opening up another shop on St., in St. Paul or in one of the suburbs. All I need is another column and I just record those hours. Pretty simple. I heard other people say that this is going to hurt the people that this is designed to help. Well, it's funny that all, all the people that this is designed to help are speaking for this ordinance. So I don't think it's going to hurt them. And also, you know, some people talk about treating people differently in different areas. Well, you know, Target Corporation, when we banned the box in the state of Minnesota, banned the box throughout the whole country. Why can't, why can't companies do the same? So when it comes down to ethics and business ethics, which may be an oxymoron to some, but I think it's a reality. I think we can make do past this ordinance and we as business owners can figure it out. If we have to increase our sales, whatever we have to do to make it work for our businesses. Because you know what? We want to survive. So we will figure it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker forty-seven? Then forty-eight?
I was actually Speaker seventy-three, but she left, so she gave me her ticket.
Arcoil Bordeo?
My name is Will Moore.
Okay, so you are Speaker seventy-three?
Yes.
And I must not have that sheet, so you might want to just double check your sign. Okay. Go ahead.
All right, like I mentioned before, my name is Will Moore. I'm speaking on behalf of fast food workers and single parents. I was currently a couple of years back working at Buffalo Wild Wings and Benihanas. And also I was a single father, three at the time. And I called in to work because my daughter was sick. And at the time, I didn't have any family support or, you know, I was being a good parent. I wasn't going to send my child to work or to school sick. And, you know, people are affected not having this opportunity because, you know, we don't have support all the time. We don't have family support all the time. We don't have, you know, daycare support all the time, especially when it's expensive. And watching my mom growing up as the oldest child and having to step up when, you know, she goes to work eight years old at home with my brother and sister alone. You know, while my mom worked at McDonald's and slaved for them. And, you know, come back home and get fired because I go to the hospital because I was too little or whatnot. So they sent me to the hospital and my mom ended up losing her job because she had to take off work to take care of me. So we've been being affected by this since nineteen something, nineteen nineties, you know? So I just, I'm very in favor of this and I believe you guys should really pass this bill.
Thank you. And is, is Mr. Moore all signed up so he doesn't have anything more to do?
Yes, Madam Chair.
I just wanted to check that. Speaker forty-eight? Okay, and what was your original number, please?
I think it was twenty-one.
Twenty-one. Okay. And then after that, Speaker forty-nine. Speaker fifty, Emma Shankland. Speaker fifty-one is Kieran Knutson. And if, can any of those speakers get ready? Thank you.
Cool. Thank you. My name is Matt Bartholomew. I'm in Ward ten. I just came here, I'm going to try to keep it short, but I worked, I used to work at Common Roots, which does offer paid sick time. And I just want to say, as an employee of Common Roots, I really valued that. And I know I've heard the, the story that folks are going to abuse it, but I waited because I knew I would need that someday. Or I knew, I, you know, I hope I would need it someday, but I, but I waited. And because I waited, I had back problems and I was able to take time off. I was able to heal. If I wasn't able to do that at that time, I don't know if I would have been able to pay rent. And so this whole, this whole issue of people abusing it, it really isn't a deal. I talked to my fellow employees about that and everyone was very respectful of it. But I also, throughout the past few months, I've spoken with a lot of servers, back of house folks, managers, owners of restaurants. Because I was doing some organizing for NOK. And people are overwhelmingly in favor of this. People need it. A lot of the people could not show up to the hearings. A lot of the people couldn't show up here because they're working. And I think that's a legit thing that hopefully you'll be getting emails and I really hope that you pay attention to those emails. Because they weren't able to be here, they weren't able to voice their, their opinion. And I just want to say, there's a lot of talk about just talking about racial equity and policy that, you know, just doing like studies and stuff like this. This is an actual opportunity to have a racially equitable policy and to bring it to the city. And I don't see why you would pass up on this. So I really encourage you to pass it as was recommended by the work group that took thousands of volunteer hours to make.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Speaker forty-nine, is there a speaker forty-nine? And did you, what was your original number?
My original number was eighty-three.
Okay. Eighty, eighty-three?
Madam Chair, his original number was number four. This is Guillermo Lindsay.
Here we are. Okay. All right. And if you want, go ahead and just let us know your name and email.
My name is Guillermo Lindsay. I'm a fast food worker for McDonald's. Also, I was selected to be part of the Workers' Partnership Group for Paid Sick Leave. With that being said, I support this movement, this proposal to you guys because I'm a fast food worker. I've been a fast worker fourteen years. And with that, two years ago, I was forced to walk into work sick with food-like symptoms. And with that being said, I got my coworkers sick as well. With that, it's either risk a day at work and me getting fired or force myself to go to work and get, get everybody else sick. For that, I chose to do that because me getting fired, I couldn't pay my bills if I got fired, you know? I urge you guys, Miss Alondra, I don't want to say your last name because I always butcher it, and Mr. Fry, you know me. I'd like to tell you guys that I urge you guys to pass this proposal because not only it would uplift the low poverty class, but it would uplift everybody. You know, like we're not just fighting to live, we're fighting to survive. And with that, who are we if we can't take care of our children in a respectful way and a healthy way, you know? And with that, that's why, you know, our vice and chair and also Ms. Noria and Ron, you know, a couple of my colleagues, we came up with this proposal to let you guys know that's why we, we doing this. Because with this, we can be so much better of a Minnesota and let it known in Minneapolis, you know? And that's why I came here to tell you guys today that I urge you guys to please pass this today, not tomorrow, not after breakfast, not before lunch, now. So, once again, my name is Guillermo Lindsay. Also, I'm an organizer for Sintool, along with ally with NOK, neighbors organizer for change and Working Day America. So, thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty is Emma Shankland. Speaker fifty-one is Kieran Knutson. Speaker fifty-two is Lena Goli. Speaker fifty-three, Mr. Stanek. So if people can physically line up and, and get ready, that would be great.
Hi, I'm Emma Shankland. I live at twenty-four twenty-four Grand Avenue South, Ward ten. I've worked in the restaurant industry for the past six years. And over those six years, it's been a variety of part-time or full-time, been in school and out of school. But I've also suffered through a lot of major chronic health problems. I've suffered from depression, anxiety. I'm recovered from an eating disorder and I have chronic migraines. I've suffered with migraines for my entire life and I want to tell you a story about a couple of years ago when I first started having them again. I was working at a restaurant. It was August, so I was in between school and I was trying to save up money so I didn't have to work all the time during school. I still worked part-time, but I didn't want to, you know, have to fight too much with the work and school balance. I started getting migraines every day, multiple times a day, during shifts, before shifts or after shifts. It got to the point where in the middle of shifts, I would have to go to the break room and give myself Imetrek shots and hide in the break room until I could open my eyes again. I didn't have the option not to go to work. I got as many shifts covered as I could. But the reality of restaurants is that most people are maxed out. They're doing, they're in school or they're in multiple jobs or they have children and other obligations. And while it is flexible and it's good for those people, it's hard to pick up a shift two hours before a shift when you get sick. It just doesn't work out all the time. So I did get shifts covered if I could, but I also had to pay for school. I had to pay for medical bills for being sick. And if I left work, I couldn't pay for rent. So I had to make the choice. Either am I going to go home and get rest or am I going to go to work, pay for my bills and be able to pay to maybe not be sick longer? It's kind of a catch 22 because you just get in a cycle of extending your sickness or being able to afford the care and the bills you need.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-one? Okay, and what was your original number?
My original number was seventy-eight.
Seventy-eight. And I do see you here. I just want to make sure everybody signed up. Once you introduce yourself and then we'll take your testimony.
My name is Rod Adams. My address is eighteen eleven Fourteenth Avenue South, Ward six. And I'm here and I'm here to speak positively about the proposal. About, about a year ago, year and a half ago, I was a, I worked in a restaurant. While working in this restaurant, I was, I was a cook. I was a prep cook. I, I got ready all the vegetables and meat. So I sliced a lot of things. While slicing a piece of meat, I, I basically sliced off a small chunk of my thumb. And it bled profusely. There was not, there was not like a protocol to do something after I sliced my thumb. So when I went to my manager, he told me, just put some gauze on it, some Band-Aids and get back to work and finish your shift. And you know what I did? I did just that. The reason I did that is because I didn't, I didn't have any power over my employer. I didn't, I myself felt powerless. Basically, the, the dynamics of the situation left me basically feeling powerless. Left, left me feeling like my voice, my mental strain, my physical pain did not matter. I felt like my body was owned by my employer. I was almost sure that my body was only an instrument to drive profits. Four hundred years later and I was still a slave. And you might not know why I and other workers continue to work through pain and sickness, so I'm gonna tell you. I worked because as a restaurant worker, barely making ends meet, I could not fathom missing a day of work. Missing a day of work was economic death for me and hundreds of other thousands of workers in Minneapolis. I worked because I did not have the protections that a universal sick time policy has. The same protections included in the sick time policy that sits on all of your desks. And on top of this, what happens after you don't go back to work? What happens when you don't go back to work is your employer starts retaliating against you. That happened to me where like my hours were cut. And basically I ended up getting fired. And once I got fired to take, basically taking care of myself, I couldn't pay my bills. I lost my car. I lost my house. So I had to move in with my mom. My mom received Section Eight. Once I moved in with my mom, that some, for some reason, somebody found out that I was living there and she was almost about to lose her home. So not only does this affect me or affect the person that is actually sick or going through something, it affects their entire family. So council members, I'm asking you to take a stand because like I lost everything. And there are so many people who lost everything that they have because they did not have a protection like this. And I beg you to do something about this. We need sick time now. And I'm sure you will. Give us sick time now.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-two and then fifty-three, I see. And fifty-four is Kyle Macario. Speaker fifty-five is Kathy, Kathy.
Hi, good afternoon, councilmen. Thank you for your time. I want to speak on behalf of myself and my fellow Asian restaurant owners. I feel that we are very underrepresented. And I am not against giving quality of life to employees. And I'm not against having employees, I, I don't want them to come into sick, to work if they're sick. And I will not want them to lose their wages because they're sick. I have been there. I've been doing business in Minneapolis for eleven years. And I'm proud to say that I'm able to provide paid hundred percent premium dental and health for my full-time employees after doing business for eleven years. I started with only six employees, including myself, eleven years ago. And I'm able to, you know, increase and have a second restaurant and have thirty or more and maybe more as we get busier. I want to be able to provide a good quality of life for them. But I feel the ordinance is written in a way that is hindering small business owners to want to open new businesses or open another business and want to do business in Minneapolis. And I ask that you, I'm not against this ordinance. I, I believe we should provide sick and safe time for employees. But please work on the language of the ordinance where it will work for small business or micro business. It does not fit our business models. One size fits all does not work. And I feel this is my personal opinion of how this ordinance is written and I am against it. I, I ask that you look further into it and amend it and so that it will work better in a way. I will keep it short. I, I've heard a lot of compassionate stories and I'm empathetic of a lot of situations. I've been there. I've had no self-insurance. I had to consider whether I should go to the emergency room because I was very sick. I've been there and I want to work hard for my employees and I'm doing just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-three and then fifty-four, Speaker fifty-five. And then Speaker fifty-six is Peggy Ryan Hart. And any of those speakers to line up? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Glidden and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My name is John Stanek and I'm the interim president of the Minneapolis Regional Chamber of Commerce. I appear before you today on behalf of that organization as well as the Workplace Fairness Coalition, which is comprised of a variety of which is comprised of a variety of business associations and employers across the city, including small, medium, and large-sized businesses. The Workplace Fairness Coalition shares the city's goal of broadening access to sick and safe leave across the city, but we are not able to support the one-size-fits-all approach that is contained in the proposed city ordinance in its current form. Um, what I'd like to do in the interest of time is just to talk about some of the concerns we've heard from our members and ask you to consider these issues. One issue that we've heard a lot of, and to show you that one-size-fits-all is not just a slogan, um, we are concerned that there is not a clear carve-out or exclusion for those employers in the city of Minneapolis who are providing benefits at the level in the proposed ordinance or beyond. And we would seriously urge you to consider clarifying that matter. I'm an attorney by background and training, but I'm advised by lawyers who are much smarter than me in this area that it's not clear. We urge you to take a careful look at that, both as a way of recognizing those employers who are doing the right thing according to the proposed ordinance and incent others as well. We have a number of other items that admittedly go beyond clarification of intent to some substantive items, and I'll try to clip through those very, very quickly. Our small employers have asked you to consider raising the threshold from six or more employers to twenty-four or more. Our startup businesses have asked you to consider an exemption in the first five years of their operation. The regional dashboard indicators that was just released last Friday, one of the measurements is the number of businesses that succeed in our region beyond five years, and it's just slightly over half, so we'd ask you to look at that. Collective bargaining agreements, we'd ask you to look at the New York language, which says a collective bargaining agreement in place, the ordinance would not apply unless and till in a subsequent collective bargaining agreement, both parties explicitly waive the requirements. And we'd also ask you to consider raising, as Seattle has done, the threshold for employees coming into the city of Minneapolis beyond the eighty-hour threshold contained in the proposed ordinance to a higher number. We have other concerns, but we appreciate you considering these comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-four, and if, uh, speakers fifty-five, fifty-six, and fifty-seven is Jeff Summers. I would like to just get ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and council members. My name is Kyle Macarios, and I work for the Carpenters Union. Uh, and I, Dan McConnell's out of town. He asked me to come and speak on behalf of the Minneapolis Building and Construction Trades Council. Um, our mission is to make sure that construction workers make a good living and can take care of their families. Um, and we strongly believe that, uh, workers should be able to take care of themselves when they're sick and stay home from work, and should be able to take care of loved ones when they're sick as well. So we support the proposed ordinance. Um, but we do want to say that we really appreciate that the proposed ordinance takes into account the special circumstances in much of the construction industry due to the transitory nature of our jobs and due to the fact that many of our members work for multiple employers over the course of a year. Uh, we want to thank you, council members and city staff who've come up with a solution to that. Uh, we support it and will continue to be engaged, uh, as we move forward if it needs any perfecting. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-five, and I couldn't read your last name. I apologize. Uh, and thank you, everyone else for lining up.
Hi, my name is Kathy Harold Latham. I'm a mother and a resident of Minneapolis as well as the Director of Public Policy for the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association. We represent about eight hundred agencies across the state that employ about sixty thousand individuals each week in this, in the city of Minneapolis and throughout the greater state of Minnesota. These individuals are employed in opportunities that are actually the bridge to long-term employment and better wages, and opportunities that they would not otherwise have if they didn't have the opportunity to work with our members. The faces of contingent talent range from warehouse workers to accountants, teachers, and attorneys. It is a bigger problem and a bigger scale that this ordinance will impact. The biggest issue for our members is in the details. The unfortunate aspect of this one-size-fits-all is that in an industry where our employees go to multiple locations on a, from a day-to-day basis, we cannot provide the same kind of notices to our employees that traditional employers can when the employee comes to the same location every single day and receives the exact same wage every single day. We are not able to account, to calculate the same benefit because our employees make a different wage every day. There's no guidance in the ordinance as it stands and how we would accrue that, how we would calculate that, or how we would even track where our employees are in the city of Minneapolis or otherwise. There's no technology that exists right now. The devil is in the details, and we strongly oppose this ordinance because it prevents the, it prevents us from providing those opportunities to the people that this ordinance is intended to help. And that is why we oppose the ordinance.
Could you please say one more time the name of the organization you represent?
Sure. It's the Minnesota Recruiting and Staffing Association.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, speaker fifty-six, and then speaker fifty-seven is Jeff Summers. Speaker fifty-eight is, um, Abdurrahman Kahin. Uh, speaker fifty-nine is Lonnie McQuirter. Yes.
Thank you. My name is Margaret Reinhardt, also known as Peggy Reinhardt. And I'm the Ward ten representative to the Public Health Advisory Committee. And that committee has previously submitted a letter of support of this ordinance to the working partnership. However, I'm here to speak about my observations about the impact of this ordinance. I respectfully ask the members of the Minneapolis City Council to consider the impact of unpaid sick time on the children of those workers who are often low-wage workers. Children are hurt in many ways by the sheer arbitrariness of whether or not an employer offers paid sick, paid time off. Uh, I think you probably know, obviously, if there's a sick, uh, rest, food service worker, restaurant worker, the consequences of that. However, if a worker drops off a sick child at school, you have more sick children, even teachers, and so it goes. And they do that because they are being forced to choose between work, money, and their child. And you know what? I wonder how a sick child feels about that when their parent drops them off for their job. There are other consequences for children when paycheck comes up short due to a sick parent missing work. For example, I noticed during a January fire alarm that, by the way, I tutor at Jefferson and Whittaker Schools. Forgot to mention that. Uh, I noticed that many kindergarten and first grade boys were shivering in short-sleeved shirts. No long sleeves, no undershirts, even some kids no socks. Why don't children have warm clothes? The loss of one day's pay due to sickness means there won't be enough money to buy warm clothes for a son or daughter. One kindergarten class started the school year with fourteen students, but by February, five of those students were gone and five new students had taken their place.
And if you could conclude your remarks, please?
Well, just primarily, all this to say, the lack of paid sick time impacts children. I see it in the mobility and instability of families caused when pay is docked and there's not enough money for rent, food, or clothing. I see it in stress and worry of a child when their parents fight over money. Without paid sick time, moms and dads take on multiple jobs and extra shifts.
Thank you.
And I urge you to support the paid sick time as a sign that you represent the children of this city also.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Fifty-seven is our next speaker, and then fifty-eight, if you are here.
Hello, councilmember, Chair Person Glidden and councilmembers. Um, Jeff Summers, owner of Izzy's Ice Cream. I'm thrilled to be here today and what an honor to see democracy gears turning. Um, we work really hard, um, in our business. We've, just as an example, we've probably employed over seven hundred people under the age of eighteen in our sixteen-year time in business. And it's really important for me to present to you some consideration of looking at the policy with respect to workers under the age of eighteen. Um, I submitted some statements earlier today to all of you. And, um, I just want to digress to a personal story to start. Um, in our family, my mother dropped out of South High School at the age of sixteen to take care of her older sister and her two, her two younger sisters due to the loss of her father and a mother that couldn't support the household. I get the, all of it. And so I then went on and graduated high school and college and taught Minneapolis Public Schools for nine years, seventh and eighth grade English. Izzy's as an organization is committed to serve and to lead in the community. There are elements of the proposal that make some of our work more difficult and, and potentially less successful. If for just a minor detail, um, this has happened in our sixteen-year history. If you will, there's been a, a worker who is under the age of eighteen, who is called in sick, who social media has presented to us as not sick. Um, they've been off to some other fun adventure. In this environment, that, that, as proposed, we would be in a very high-stakes condition with that young staff member who is now paid for their time off at, uh, an event. And the changes, the nature of which we, in sort of, if you will, the spirit of the kind and just parent, the redirection, the mentoring, the development of professional responsibility, building a workforce for the community and for global citizenship, it kind of straps our hands in terms of that dialogue by putting money into the equation. And so we ask that you consider some, some things for young workers. If you look at state and federal law, there are special considerations for young workers, both in terms of unemployment, healthcare, minimum wage, and, and, and I'm sure there are many more. So, um, please take a look at the impacts that could, um, sort of impact the community in ways that would limit the leadership, that, at least that we're trying to develop and build in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaker fifty-eight. And then if speakers fifty-nine, sixty, sixty-one, if, if any of those other speakers are available, I'm, I'm not seeing any, only one other person, so I don't know who all is here.
Madam Chair.
And I know some might have left.
Uh, speakers sixty and sixty-one have spoken.
Okay. Chair Glidden, councilmembers, Lonnie McQuirter, who owns one thirty-six, could not be here. Uh, he, he had actually a sick employee he had to take care of, and so he's working that shift right now and paying her. And Abdi Kakin also just got back from Africa, and he was on the partnership group. He wanted to be here, but he couldn't make it either. So I'm speaking and on behalf, and I wasn't planning on speaking, but I realized I probably should. Um, I, with the, the State Direction, Director of Main Street Alliance of Minnesota, we're an advocacy network of small businesses. I've met with many of you. Um, and I actually had the privilege of being in New Jersey while they were going through these discussions on earned sick and safe time. So in the fall of twenty thirteen, Jersey City was considering the same ordinance, and I worked with our members there to look at what kind of policy would work on earned sick and safe time. And a number of small businesses did support it, but same as here, it was, it was very controversial. There was businesses who were really concerned and, and came out to the city, city council to oppose it. There were businesses that supported it and already were providing these benefits. And, um, it got passed in Jersey City, and two months later, Newark passed an even better ordinance. And it worked so well that two years later, six additional cities throughout New Jersey, Irvington, Trenton, East Orange, Passaic, um, I'm not gonna remember all. I should have a list, but, um, they passed the same thing. And it, and it worked very, I mean, it works. Nothing happens. Actually, Jersey City, a few months ago, went back and had to fix their policy to increase it to make sure that all workers have access to paid leave. Um, they originally exempted businesses with fewer than ten employees, and that just didn't make any sense. So I urge you to pass the policy as, as recommended by the partnership group. I've been really impressed with the process. Six months, actually nine months of a public, very public debate. Um, and the, the Workplace Partnership Group included small businesses at the table to help create a policy that it, they don't, to support, they actually helped create. Um, the Small Business Office was a great recommendation, and we hope that moves forward. And, um, and that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just, I'm gonna call out some numbers just to double-check if, if someone is here with that number. So I think she was, uh, covering speakers fifty-eight and fifty-nine. Is there a speaker sixty? Okay. Are you speaker sixty?
I'm sixty-three.
You're sixty-three. The gentleman behind you was saying, did you? All right. So have you signed up to speak? What was your original number?
My number was sixty-nine. My name is Maurice Franklin.
Okay. Thank you, and I have you right here.
And I'm here on behalf of everyone, also Neighborhoods Organizer for Change, and I appreciate y'all being receptive to our stories. Hello, my name is Maurice. I'm currently a campus member for NOT. I'm here to speak on a job that I had. I can't really speak on the company's name because we took legal, I took legal action against it. But, um, I feel the bill should be passed for safe and sick time, not only in Minnesota, but universally. In two thousand fifteen, I worked for a company. I fell off the dock due to frivolous employee. I was hurt to the point I couldn't work. My boss was actually one who helped me. He actually helped me, picked me up, told me go to the hospital. Um, it was a Friday. He told me come back on a Monday. When I came back that Monday, I didn't have a job no more. But the thing is, he sent me home. He sent me home. He told me I could come back, but when I got back, it was a whole different story. And I have, I have people I have to take care of as well as everyone else. And I feel like everyone here could agree with me. Y'all have family members that have been sick, y'all self have been sick. Y'all have to take care of emergencies that y'all can't do so because y'all working. So I just feel the paid, safe, and sick time will help us all out. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. So there was not a speaker sixty, or sixty-one, or sixty-two. That was sixty-three, I believe. Sixty-four?
Not sixty-three.
Okay, sixty-five? Okay. Speaker sixty-five, I think that you, you moved down to sixty-nine, right?
I'm sixty-three.
Right, but you allowed that gentleman to take your spot? So can I take the other speakers before you, just so we stay in order? And then I'll sludge you in right at sixty-three.
Um, do we have someone before sixty-three right now?
I think so. Sixty-four? Is that all right?
Sixty-three. Um, I do have to leave and I am, I'm the next number, I think.
I'm sorry. We, we have gotten out of order here and, all right. I'm spending more time than necessary. Why don't you go ahead? Introduce your name, please.
Sure, that's Daniel.
Okay.
Um, I live in the twelfth ward.
All right.
Good to see you, Councilwoman Johnson. Um, and, um, I live in South Minneapolis. I am a mother. I am a, um, self-employed person. I've been working as ten, for ten years, um, consulting on education. I work with public schools. I work with, um, youth programs, um, other nonprofits, et cetera. And, um, I would just like to say that I'm very much in support of this, of this, um, measure. And I think it's incredibly important, and it's an equity issue, it's a health issue, it's a family issue. Um, I'd also like to say that, you know, we talk a lot about employees and employers, but in reality, every employee is a family member, is a community member. Many are parents, many are, um, children or siblings, many are students. Um, employers likewise, we're all consumers. We all have multiple roles in society. And by providing this kind of support for workers, we're also providing support for the community, and we're enabling people to earn money that will enable them to keep jobs and keep apartments and continue consuming and drive the engine of our economy. Um, very briefly, my own personal story is that I've been privileged to have earned sick and safe time throughout my career, and, um, I have a daughter who has asthma. And when she was young, you know, if you ever had been around somebody with asthma, we would take her to urgent care or the emergency room. And if you take a child with, say, an ear infection to the emergency room, you're sick, maybe for hours. If you take a child with asthma, they get you in right away because it's urgent and because, you know, if they don't breathe, they're not gonna make it. Um, so obviously, we had to stay home with our daughter when she was sick to make sure she had proper care and was still alive when we got home. Um, therefore, if we had not had sick leave and safe time, we would not have been able to do that. My husband and I would have been strapped. We would have lost money. We would have lost, um, possibly jobs. And, you know, we would have, our ability to provide a life for our family would have been severely compromised. So we know how important this is, and as a city that is coming together and trying to overcome racial disparities, we need this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a speaker sixty-four? Speaker sixty-four, if there is a speaker sixty-five, Sarah Nelson, please, uh, and then speaker sixty-six, if you could be ready. Okay, thank you.
Mi nombre es Gerania Mata. Soy miembro del Centro de Trabajadores Unidos en Lucha de Cetul. Y estoy aquí a favor de esta enmienda.
Hi, my name is Gerania Mata, and I'm a member of the Center for Workers United in Struggle, and I'm here to speak in favor of this proposal.
A lo largo de cuatro años, yo he mirado muchas injusticias con los trabajadores. No solo salarios de miseria, de pobreza, sino que aparte no tienen beneficios. Por cada cien trabajadores que he conocido, noventa o más del noventa y cinco por ciento no tienen días enfermos pagados.
So over my four years, um, as a member of Cetul, I've seen a lot of injustices. Um, I've spoken, it's not just the poverty wages, but also lack of benefits that are affecting workers. I would say out of every hundred workers I've spoken to, ninety-five of them do not have benefits.